I asked for it last night.
Okay, Councilmember Daigle.
Number three, the cable TV agreement. Are we going with Martina's agreement? Okay. Thank you.
And I have no question. Mr. Rosansky, do you have any nice tie?
Thank you. It's actually a Homer tie. On the one that...
Give anything clarification on the...
No, thank you.
...calendar? All right. Then that brings us down to the staff's top priorities for 2006 and '07.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you well know, you have been reviewing budget issues for the last three studies. This is the fourth and final one. So based upon where we have been in looking at budget issues, we have completed review of all of the departments. And I thought what I would do today is spend some time talking about staff priorities. This is something that we bring to the city council every year at this time, so you can put it in the context of the budget and also provide feedback as to whether you think what staff is proposing our priorities to you, so that we can make sure that we are in sync as far as what is really important for you. Wanted to review the new budget positions. There were some questions regarding those budget positions and wanted to go through those again and just see if you had any questions. And the thinking is here that we would cover some of these items, hoping, knowing that we will have a long council meeting tonight, that you won't make any decisions during the study session, but if there are any questions about any of these budget issues, budget positions, staff priorities, or anything else, that we can have those discussions and it will relieve us of having some of those discussions later during the regular meeting. And then Dave Kiff is going to provide a review of water quality grants, because I know that these have come to you in bits and pieces, and what Dave is going to do today is kind of paint the overall complete picture of what kind of water quality grants that we have, what is being done with those grants, and what our obligations are to try and create a big picture to how all of those grants fit together. And anything else that you would like to cover as far as any budget issues? So let me get started as far as looking at staff priorities. And I thought what I would do, since we have some council people who haven't gone through this process before, is quickly run through a brief history of staff priorities. So we actually started coming to the city council in 2001 and 2002 with staff priorities. The reason I did this was just because staff gets so busy in day-to-day operations and making sure that things are happening, and with the CIP, that a lot of times there are large, important projects or things to get done, that unless you really carve out some time, staff doesn't get around to. So I thought it would be a good exercise to go through to try and have staff come up with what they saw as our staff priorities for each year, get some concurrence from the city council, and then realize that we really need to make a commitment in order to move these things along, and we just can't wait until there's a good time to do these things, because there's never going to be a good time. So we just have to make the time and make the commitment. So we started this process in 2001 and '02, and I'll just quickly go over these. Assigned JWA settlement agreement, began and complete the public outreach for the general plan update process. So the first time we ever did this in 2001, we began the general plan process. Complete annexation of the Newport Coast, adopt new personnel policies, which the council did, obtain compliance with MPDS permit requirements, complete time-sensitive capital improvement projects, improve the plan check permit process. This is where we came up with the 30-day turnaround. Reduce city's electrical consumption by 10 percent. We came close to doing that. Implement training for first-line and mid-level managers, and began the LCP certification process. So FY 01-02. The following year, we had to finalize the John Wayne settlement agreement, complete the outreach and policy development phases of the general plan process, complete annexation for the Santa Ana Heights and Bay Knolls, prepare and submit LCP draft to the coastal commission, develop a traffic signalization management system, which we did do. Further staff priorities were develop an organization response to MPDS and back Bay water quality requirements, and from that response came our water quality code enforcement division. Develop joint Mariners library planning process, identify permanent Santa Ana Heights fire station location and funding source, city hall planning and facility maintenance. So that is when we got into the issue of what we were going to do with city hall. Complete cable TV franchise renewal revision process, so that's how long this one has been around. Identify funding sources and prepare plans for Big Canyon Reservoir cover, and for the first time disaster preparedness training shows up as one of our staff priorities. The following year, the LCP headed the list to try and get the LCP certified and the implementation plan to the coastal commission, implement a code and water quality enforcement program, more general plan update process, temporarily reconfigure Mariners Park Playfield and complete design development for the new library. And we're not going to do that park reconfiguration until now. We're going to get into it after this summer and after the heavy play period is over. Starting complete design of the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. Complete annexation of West Santa Ana Heights Country Club and Mason Drive. We know that that really didn't go anywhere. Seven was city hall replacement project and long-term space needs, so getting into that space needs analysis. Again, negotiate cable TV franchise agreements, develop standardized evaluation processes, that's performance evaluation processes for employees, and again bolster our disaster preparedness. And then '04-'05, resume planning on replacement of city hall and essential public safety facilities, because we had about a nine-month process where nothing happened, and that was picking that process back up. Begin construction of the new Mariners Library, finalize land acquisition plans and specifications for the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station, some more general plan process. Work with the coastal commission staff on certifying the LCP land use plan. Begin plans and specifications for Newport Coast Community Center, reach an agreement with the YMCA for Santa Ana Heights Community Center, develop a plan for morning canyon slope stabilization and vegetation management, begin sphere issue discussions with the county, develop succession planning and leadership training within the organization. So this current year, sphere's issues was the number-one issue, and that was to conclude an agreement with the county. We're still not there yet, but we think we're very close and should be bringing something to you shortly. Complete the local coastal program certification process. We are not there yet. We still have the implementation plan to come to you and to be approved by the coastal commission. Develop a general plan proposal to meet November 2006 election timeframe. Of course, we'll be talking about that tonight, but we are on our time schedule. Four was complete Marina Park use plan. Not there yet, but I think substantial progress has been made. Five is design development of the city hall complex project, and we picked that one up heavily last May and worked through about December on it, and then the committees met earlier this year. Number six, plan and implementation of centennial celebration events. Seven, essential building assessment. That was looking at public safety buildings. We have not done that yet. And somehow, and one of the reasons why was, I think, the committee work and came up with a process as far as the Facilities Review Committee in terms of, before undertaking any public facility, that we would undergo that kind of process. Number eight is open Mariners Library, which we did do. Nine, begin construction of Newport Coast and Santa Ana Heights Community Centers. We're close to Newport Coast, not the Santa Ana Heights Community Center. Ten was gain control over Sunset Ridge Park. I think, again, we are close, but I say that on a number of them. Process was much more difficult than anybody thought it would be. Eleven, begin construction of the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station, and that should take place next month. Twelve is develop succession planning and leadership training program. We've done some work on that, but we still have work to go. That's the end of that presentation, but the staff priorities for 2006 and 2007 are going to look a whole lot like they did for this year. At the top of the list is the city-county sphere issues agreement. Meeting with Mr. Mock on Thursday regarding that agreement, and like I say, I hope to bring something to the city council and to the community to review in July. I think we're very close to an agreement that we can bring to our respective boards. Two is complete the general plan update process. I'm just going to go quickly through these and then go over them in a little more detail. Civic center project issues, begin issuing LCP permits, initiate and oversee specific construction projects that are identified. Six is Marina Park site issues. Seven is implementation of a 20-year facilities replacement plan that kind of came out of the Facilities Committee. Eight is hire management team replacements, and we'll talk about what those replacement positions are going to be. Nine, implement a leadership succession plan. That kind of dovetails into one of them from the previous year. And ten, begin planning for replacement of Oasis Senior Center. So let me run through these in just a little more detail, and then afterwards, I'm going to ask and see what kind of feedback there is from the city council as to whether you think that these are the right things that staff should be focusing on and spending a lot of their time and attention with. First one, the city-county spheres issue agreement. We want to reach agreement with the county on the following sphere issues: JWA expansion approval process, the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment agency, county transfer of tidlands, including Newport Dunes property to the city, and do plans and studies regarding who does what in both the upper and lower bays. Responsible staff members here are myself and Dave Kiff. The second one is complete the general plan, and that means concluding the general plan update process with meetings at both the Planning Commission and the city council to finalize the document, respond to EIR comments, and place those general plan provisions subject to a vote on the November 2006 ballot for community approval. So not the whole general plan, but those that are going to be subject to a vote. And that's Sharon Wood and Patty Temple having the staff responsibility. Three is the civic center project. Support the city council in deciding the following issues regarding the construction of a new city hall or civic center complex, and that's civic center complex, of course, city hall, park, construction, fire station. So supporting the city council in deciding the location, the consultant selection and plan development process, where the financing is going to come from, and the temporary relocations for city hall and the fire station while under construction if needed, and if the site selected is our current site. So the responsible staff are myself, Steve Badham, and Dennis Danner. Number four is begin issuing local coastal program permits. That means preparing the local coastal program implementation plan, obtaining its approval from the California Coastal Commission, and then beginning within this fiscal year the issuing of local LCP permits to residents. Responsible staff would be Patty Temple, Patrick Alfred, and Robin Clausen. Number five is initiate and oversee specific construction projects, and those include Back Bay Science Center, the Newport Coast Community Center, and the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. Responsible staff, Steve Badham, Jay Obotor, Tim Riley, and Marie Knight. Number six, Marina Park site issues. Support the city council with the following Marina Park issues. Council deciding the site plan for park development, the relocation of Marina Park tenants, deciding the priority for site development, and identifying financing for the project, with responsible staff being Dave Kiff, Robin Clausen, Steve Badham, and also Dennis Danner should be on there in terms of financing. Number seven is implementation of the 20-year facilities replacement plan, and that is assist the council budget committee and the city council with the adoption and implementation of a 20-year facilities replacement plan. As you know, the Facilities Committee did suggest a process for the city council to follow in looking at new facilities, and also had 12 recommendations. And the city council budget committee is going to take a look at that, and we need to decide how we're going to build that into our organization and way of doing business. So the city council will be deciding that, but staff will be bringing some recommendations on adopting council policies regarding how to do that.
What's the budget committee?
It's the council budget committee.
Who's on that committee?
No, maybe I...
You're talking about Finance Committee?
Is it the Finance Committee? Okay, I have it mixed up, sorry.
No problem. Thought maybe there's another committee floating around there. That's me? Oh, okay. Number 22.
Number eight is hire management team replacements. We need to hire excellent replacements for the following retiring management team positions during the upcoming fiscal year. Our chief in November, executive assistant this November, planning director about next February, and police chief in June of 2007. Yeah, the executive assistant is Debbie Lechtrich, yes. So, I mean, when you look at our management team basically composed of 15 people and four of them leaving in 12 months, that is a big turnover, and that's a lot of process. And new people...
Doesn't have your name up there, but you're irreplaceable, Homer.
I know it's day-by-day, Councilman Ridgway. Number nine is implement a leadership succession plan, and this one kind of dovetails in on the last one. For the internal organization, we need to develop and formalize a long-term organizational leadership succession plan consisting of training opportunities and experiences necessary to prepare the next generation of city employees for leadership positions. I think most people have read and seen and probably thought about the baby boomers retiring and what that is going to do to the job market, and I think all cities and really probably all businesses are going to be affected. And I think we need to do a better job of doing internal training and recognizing internal potential leadership. And that doesn't mean that we always will be promoting from within, and all of our department heads are going to come from within, but we really need to try and build leadership from within the organization and go through a formal training process in order to identify people and give them the opportunities to excel and be promoted and to grow, so that when we do have, I mean, four people leaving this year, and I think you've heard Barbara Ramsey say that the average age of our management team is about 55, you know, we'll be having a massive turnover within the next three years.
Maybe as a retired political figure, I could apply for the public works director? Kind of reverse the process here?
I thought maybe the building director would...
No, no. I want to be public works.
He absolutely does not qualify as a public works director. Planning person, well, we'll consider him for that.
There are minimum qualifications.
I could be your secretary.
Oh, heaven help us. Number 10 is begin planning for replacement of the Oasis Senior Center, and that, we kick off that process by conducting a space needs assessment and developing a building concepts for new Oasis Senior Center. I know the seniors are doing a assessment process themselves as far as space needs assessment is concerned, but we need to take a look at that, make sure that it's well-rounded and has, is well-thought-out, and then we can proceed with building concepts. That's Marie Knight, Steve Badham, and Linda Kay. So that's the end of the presentation. Let me go back to the, let me go back to the summary then. So this is what staff is proposing. I think in looking at these in totality and maybe looking at them from the prior years, I thought that would be maybe informative, and I think it has been, because if you look at those first four staff priorities, sphere issues and general plan and civic center and LCP permits, I think they've been at the number-one priority each of those over the last four years. And we've gotten to the point to where we should be able to finish those off this year. Long processes, some of them taken a lot longer than we thought they would, but I think it just points out the level of important projects that you have been working with and staff has been working with, any one of which, in most normal years, would be number one at the top of the priority list. And then we're getting into construction projects as far as those three projects that were identified, looking number six at another future construction project. Number seven has to do with 20-year facility replacement plan, more projects. 10 is another project. So I think over time, in looking at our priorities, what we can see is we're becoming much more project-oriented, and that is really affecting the organization. We've always had a healthy CIP program, but now we're looking at doing those projects beyond a normal CIP and replacing some of our facilities, and I think it's really impacted staff in a big way. Building Department, Planning Department, certainly Public Works, but city manager staff, people in fire that are associated with some of those projects. The process that we have is really a lengthy process and requires a lot of detail and a lot of planning. And I think what this shows is that really the business of the staff has kind of changed over the last six years, and we're much more project-oriented, and that brings its own special challenges and its own special time demands. At least, that's what it says to me. So I think I will just stop right here and see if you have any feedback on these top-10 priorities, anything that you think that should be on there that isn't on there. This doesn't mean that we aren't going to be chasing after other things and trying to complete them, but this is just trying to make sure that we have a focus to where we push them along and make as much headway as we can. But I think on the first five, we're looking at completing all of those, are coming very near completion of all of those.
Councilmember Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Homer. I think that's an excellent list of priorities. I would make three points. First of all, the facilities improvement plan that was put forward by the committee, as I recall, is a 15-year plan, not 20-year plan. So I'm hopeful that we're able to keep that moving at the same pace as it was initially outlined and move forward with those very important projects. Secondly, as to the leadership training program, I think that's very important. We need to provide career paths for people coming up through the ranks in the city as we have retirements, but I also think as part of that process, we need to have a clean sheet of paper look at how we deliver services. So as vacancies develop, we're looking at the whole panoply of how that service can be delivered as opposed to simply filling spaces as they available. And thirdly, I think we ought to think in the next fiscal year about how we really put together and share with the public an emergency preparedness and response plan. I know that's been an issue that many citizens in the community have raised, and we need to, I think, do a better job in letting our citizens know how to respond to emergencies, what the appropriate protocols and procedures are. We now have new staffing, or will have new staffing in place for that in the course of the year, and I'd like to see that raised to a priority as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I think on item number four, begin issuing LCP permits, I think that's extremely optimistic. I think that, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, I think we'll be lucky if we, you know, have a coastal commission hearing on the implementation plan. I don't see us having something approved by our council till, close till the end of the year, then at least six months to get into a hearing with the coastal commission. So I think the way that's worded is maybe a little optimistic. And the other comment I'd make is on number two, the general plan, that if the general plan is approved in November, then we're going to be looking at a major rewrite of the zoning code to accommodate all the new general plan categories we have. So it's something that really isn't just going to stop in November if the general plan is approved, because we'll be having a major, I mean, almost a complete rewrite of the zoning code, I think, at that point in time. So those are my two comments.
Councilmember Ajay?
I would echo Councilmember Selig's comments regarding number four. I've been the chairman of that committee, it seems like, forever, and it's been up there for a long time. It won't be for lack of trying by the committee itself. Councilmember Webb, Councilmember Selig are on that committee, a couple of planning commissioners, Michael Torje is on there, Mike Henn. We're working very hard. Staff has been very supportive, but where we are today is we deferred or delayed any discussion until the general plan is up there. So we're reconvening in August. It'll be full. We'll have a total redraft of our IP that we just spent six months on. We took a different direction in the meeting. And as chairman, of course, I'd love to see that heard by coastal commission this year. So we'll try. It won't be for lack of trying, and there's a true commitment and a hard-working organization behind it, but at best, we could only get a hearing, and assuming we get a hearing and modifications, it probably would be first part of next year to mid-year before we're issuing LCPs, but I, there's no reason that can't be done. I would hope that, and I actually can say this, Patty, if she's retiring in '07, I think she'd like to finish this too. It's one of those things that she and I are probably on the same page on, so.
Enough said. Anybody else wish to comment on the list? Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I kind of look at this document as articulating the priorities of the organization and would approach it from the perspective of what is it that our citizens want? And I think one of the things that our city does really well, which is the core of a municipality, is we deliver services. You know, they turn on the faucet and water comes out, and you put your trash out and it gets picked up. You call 911 and someone responds, and whether it's personal assisting or medical aid, you go down the streets, they're swept, looks like we're going to do some more beautification. So those are all very important services, how they're being delivered. And I would agree with Councilman Curry. I think that's something that we have to look at in the future. How are these services being delivered? How are we using technology? How are labor resources being organized? What are the processes and all of that? Secondly, I think, again, what needs to be articulated is traffic management. What is our shopping list of improvements that we're doing for this community, whether it's technology, whether it's through our general plan that we're reducing the trips? But I think that needs to be articulated and prioritized. And also, when I was speaking with Councilman Ridgway about five years ago, there was a sea change in that the staff is articulating to the city council the priorities, and I believe that, you know, the council really needs to be in a leadership position saying, "Look, these are the priorities," you know, whether it's delivery of services, traffic management, and I think that the council in the future really needs to take a stronger role in articulating what the priorities are.
If I could answer that for a second, and Homer's been here for a long time, actually not as long as me.
Or me.
Are you, well, as an elected official. But we used to have an annual retreat of all staff, and the priority list was driven at that annual retreat, and it was driven by then council. And council requested Homer and, again, all the department heads. We went off-site from here. We met on a Saturday, and we discussed in a, I think in an organized way, we had staff reports from each department, and the direction was given in a collaborative effort at that time, if you remember, Homer. And I think we've lost, it's just a comment, we've lost that annual retreat meeting, which I think is important, and in light of there being so many newly-elected officials coming on board or elected officials, one way or the other, I think it would be very important for the then mayor to reconvene that type of meeting off-site with each director head, and then you can address those very specific issues. But that is the genesis of how we got to this top list, and that was a direction from the council at that point in time. And Don used to attend those. He was then a director.
Just to comment about that, and I think we did that one year, maybe the first year that...
I know we did two.
I was here.
I think we did it a couple of times before you actually got here too.
And of course, those meetings are open to the public, fully open to the public. I guess what I've found in the past is that it is difficult for city council to say as far as a priority, you're number one and you're number 10, and to an interest group that you're even off the... that you're even off the list, you aren't on the list. And that it may not be true with this city council. But of course, preparing this list is trying to think like the city council, taking into account, you know, the council meetings and the projects and the things that we have discussed over time, and just kind of reiterating, making sure that this is an opportunity for staff to say, are we hearing you correctly? Are these, you know, your priorities? We'll bring them forward as staff priorities, but they really need to be your priorities, and you can change them any way that you see fit. But really, whatever works best for you in terms of process and whatever those priorities are, staff shouldn't be driving the priorities. And I don't think any of these priorities, with the exception of a couple of organizational priorities, are really staff-driven. I think we're trying to get, or I'm trying to get, a sense from you that these things are important, that we're both on the same page, that they are important, and we will try and accomplish as much as we can of all of these things. And it's an opportunity to communicate, to make sure that the important work of the city is getting done as seen by you and through staff.
And I feel comfortable that if I have a priority that is not mentioned, and I bring it up, that it will be added to the list. And so I guess that the next question is, is does the council have any priorities that they feel should be added to this list? And should the order of the list be changed?
I think you need to somehow articulate what it is that comprehensively that we're doing about traffic, that it is a priority, and that we're making that statement, and that we have a plan for implementation to our residents.
As a councilman going off, I certainly would echo that same comment. That's something that's been missing in the priorities, and that is, how are we dealing comprehensively with traffic in the city? I know we're doing the general plan amendment, don't get me wrong, but I still haven't seen anything adequate information on the synchronization of our traffic signals. I haven't seen a discussion as a priority, how we're going to deal with traffic. And I think, at least from a council perspective, we all agree that, I think we agree up here, we haven't generated the traffic. It's just a natural progression that's occurred in the community at large, Southern California at all. But as Director, or Mr. Edmondson, the Traffic Director, knows, the highest priority at SCAG is all transportation and traffic, and it will continue to be. But they're taking it from a two-pronged approach. It becomes much more difficult. They're trying to create smart growth in communities and anticipate future cultural changes so people work and live in their own community and not thrive. I don't think we have quite that ability, but I think comprehensively, we could look at at least our traffic and at least have it up there with all the information available to everybody in the city. And that being the citizens.
Should we perhaps call it maybe a traffic management plan?
Well, that's a technical name that's used in the traffic industry. I don't know what you call it. I think Newport, you know, we have a master arterial plan, Don, as you know. Traffic management plans are dictated by numerous ordinances or rules. I don't know what to call it. I don't want to go that far. But I think it is probably something that needs to take some form today. And so, you know, what's missing is people don't understand the interrelationship of OCTA, the federal laws regarding money and improvements, the master arterial plan, our street plan. Quite candidly, we talk about it here, and it's a very complex system that I think should be part of somewhere, our documentation, so both the citizens and council are always on the same page. You know, whether it has, I think its ultimate goal is the same, and that is maintaining mobility in the future as we currently see it. I will say again, SCAG is looking at, over the next 25 years, spending over $200 billion in the six-county area, and mobility will not change one iota. That is a status quo budget, status quo, because of our population increase. But I think if our citizens understand that and we articulate the information that we have before us, we've never really done a good job of articulating all the interrelationships of all those parties, the federal, the state, the county, the 1% sales tax. Quite candidly, we've never done a good job. And I think, I think this is not a bad place to put it. I mean, it's nice that the traffic engineer is here tonight.
Mobility plan instead of traffic.
Yeah.
I was just going to say. I guess what I'm hearing is kind of a council policy regarding mobility. How do we translate that into what we're going to do about it this year? Rich, do you have any ideas?
Well, I think we have a number of specific projects in the budget, and we can certainly maybe package that a little differently in something that's more comprehensive and certainly includes some of the interrelationships that you've discussed, Councilman Ridgeway, in the short term. But I think, too, what you're talking about is maybe a longer-term look at, you know, where we go after the projects we've already identified and have in the seven-year CIP that's on your agenda later on.
Yeah, and as you know, we have to compete for those dollars, both locally and statewide and.
And countywide.
And countywide. And people need to understand that. It's just, it's kind of a missing piece that I think, if nothing else, the mobility information needs to be put out there for both council and for citizens to review, both on our web and so they understand, because it is very complex. And they also need to understand, it's very simple, but it's very complex, the interrelationship of demographics and how it relates to, quite candidly, the entire transportation plan.
Just to amplify that a little bit, I think what we were looking for is a strategic document that sort of moves us in the direction of how do we use our Measure M funds and the successor to Measure M? How do we utilize our other transportation resources? How are they focused and prioritized and leveraged with the state and federal funds? How does that interplay with our land use policies and decisions that we make? How do we design our streets and that kind of thing? And what do we do about parking to help focus all of those resources collectively on the issue of traffic within the city? And it probably includes broader things in terms of our relationships with our neighbors and how we work with them to minimize the impact of traffic here in our city.
Yeah, I would echo that, but I think the complexity, some of this was addressed when we started the general plan amendment process in that little booklet that Sharon and Woody had prepared, where we talk about traffic. We have some unique situation in the peninsula, there's nothing you can do unless you want to just gate it, you know, and that won't happen. So there are certain areas where we have limitations on what we can do, but then we do have a state highway that goes through the middle of our city, and we have two major arterials, MacArthur and Newport Boulevard, going up to the freeway system. So people just don't understand it.
Well, I think part of the challenge, too, is trying to articulate policies on the fly. So I'm hoping that with a future city council and the next mayor, that, you know, retreat is something that that council and mayor will consider in the future, and so we are able to get together and craft some policies. And when you talk about, you know, traffic, just to dovetail on what Councilman Ridgeway, Councilman Curry just said, you know, you look at, you know, comprehensive management through technology, road rate improvements, general plan amendment, you look at identifying funding sources. But really, to look at a priority and to articulate, it's very important. As far as delivery of services, you know, public safety, profound quality of life issue. How are we doing that in terms of facilities, technology, training, all of that? And in the future, how are we going to organize resources? You know, is the current direction what we want to be doing, or we use more private resources? You know, those types of things, I think, you know, again, a retreat would be good to hash that out and to organize that, because it is the city council. We represent and embody the views of our citizenry, and that's who we hear from. And what I hear from the citizens is, you know, what are you doing about traffic? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Selig?
Yeah, it sounds like what everyone's describing is circulation element to the general plan. So I think, I think what people are looking for is practical solutions to moving traffic. And I mean, we've got the circulation element. I think folks are looking for something more focused and more practical in what we're going to do to move traffic. I think that's what it's all about.
To jump on that, Ed, you didn't say it, but, and Ed is the chairman of the GPOC, I think it is. And quite candidly, we are, and we're very focused on our general plan to reduce overall approved projects that would add traffic. We're actually, we will be reducing traffic. So this council and the general plan is clearly going in that direction. I'm not sure it's been articulated well, but when you hear us discuss these matters, as we will later tonight, what we're trying to, there is a general plan on the books that has a tremendous amount of traffic to it. And everything that Ed and his committee and the end council is doing is the, we will actually reduce the overall traffic in the city based upon the new general plan. So while not understood well, that's the framework with which we're working here. Anyhow, that's what we're attempting to do. I don't know that, I think we can accomplish it, but that is the intent of this current council.
Councilmember Rosensky?
If we're finished with the traffic portion, I'd like to see that Sunset Bridge Park, completion of the acquisition of the park be added back in. I noticed it dropped off the list from last year.
I thought that was done. What are you doing up there, man?
I wish I knew.
Just a second.
Do you have a comment on that? I think as we're going to see tonight, park issues are very important in town, and certainly that's an important one for West Newport.
Councilman Nichols?
I would like to make a traffic comment. I think that we have got to work with our neighbors, particularly Costa Mesa, to get rid of a couple bottlenecks. And one of them is Coast High, I mean Newport Boulevard, where it ends at 19th Street, from there to Hospital Road. It seems obvious that we need to go underground there and spread that traffic out so that it doesn't all just bottleneck. And they don't seem to be interested in doing anything. I approached the Okta Group when they gave their presentation here in town, and they were interested. They just said that nobody's interested in talking about it, that Costa Mesa evidently doesn't want to get involved or something. I don't understand, but they are interested in funding some solution in that area. The same is true of across-town answer at a bridge along the San Ana River. I think we only have one outlet that direction, and tremendous amounts of traffic that want to go north. And so we go from there to 22nd Street to very few intersections within Costa Mesa that are viable, and yet they need to move their people to the west as well. We need to look at that. And in the same way, I think we need to look at our, how we're moving traffic in other areas, and particularly that Newport Coast interchange. Maybe that's one. And are we bottlenecking Jamboree going north altogether with the huge amount of residential that we're putting up there? I mean, people don't even take that route if they can avoid it. I mean, we, I personally go all the way up University and then north before I get to Culver, and then back across to get to the Hyatt Hotel right on Jamboree, and it's faster. And so my question is, is it looks like we need to look at these things, and maybe that should be part of our spheres issue to get involved or to get them involved, because I believe that the answers are going to have to be more than just our look at it, or somehow we've got to get the priorities. The money that we're raising for these programs is overall. I mean, it's countywide, it's statewide, and yet we're not even in line for much of that funding because of the fact that we don't have, we're not attacking where the priorities are. So I think somehow we need to do that in this area.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments related to the priority list?
I just have. I noticed that on one of the previous year's things, you had improving plan checking and permit issuing process. And I, you know, one of my biggest areas of complaints is plan check turnaround, Planning Department. I know we've had, we've got this study going, but it seems to me that that's something that we should put on as a priority to get that situation taken care of.
And staff will be coming to you probably in July, if not in July, the first meeting in August with that report and a discussion, I think a study session, discussion of that report, letting you have it in advance and trying to wrestle with that issue. But we will add it to this list. Mr. Mayor, from the traffic discussion, I think what I'm hearing is some policy statements, but also maybe the way we could respond to it, is staff is pulling out the projects and the technical improvements and circulation improvements and road projects and kind of encapsulating them into a priority in terms of, you know, that we have a priority of making sure that there's good mobility within the community, and these projects are interrelated in order to do that. Maybe that would be a good way to start, and staff can play around with that and come back at a later council meeting for your review of that.
Good, thank you.
I would like to add one more.
Okay. Mr. Nichols?
It has a lot of words in it, so I'm going to, I think we need to set our priorities in the following. Open space on dry land, open space on water, parks, recreation, community arts and recreation programs. In other words, all those things that are supporting our, that side of our culture, if you will. And I think we need to prioritize them monetarily. In other words, are we really spending our money where the community wants us to? Are we providing the right amount of recreation versus open space costs? We're spending $50 million on the Back Bay, maybe not it's all ours, but we're getting involved more and more heavily there. How about the Lower Bay? We've got thousands of people using the Lower Bay and only a few using the Upper Bay. And recreation, we have plenty of open space parks, but we have kids all over that want to use park sites, so we want some recreation for athletics. We're talking about swimming things. How does that rate, and community-wise, with just plain open space, where you walk and commune with nature? What are the priorities of our citizens that way? I think we ought to try and find that out and maybe spend our money proportionally to what people want. I don't think we're doing that at all. I think we're almost inversely doing that, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, shall we go ahead with the budget item?
All right, excuse me, I'm sorry about that. Would the public like to comment on this? Welcome back, Doris.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, is this item on the web or is there, there appears to be for you a printed document? Do you have a printed document of this? No, so you just saw this like this? Okay. Well, it would be nice if this information were made available on the website for the public to take a look at. It would also be nice if one of these days you did it at nighttime so the public could actually see what the top priorities are in the city, because as some of you have said, this is nothing that's ever asked of the public. This is just something that the staff puts together. And you're right, we used to have these meetings in a retreat on a Saturday or Sunday at the library, one time at the Balboa Bay Club, and the public was invited to come, and that did stop. Okay, in regards to the top 10 priorities up there, I think that emergency preparedness and warning, which isn't even on the list, should be number one. Number two is the fact that an EOC center, which is an emergency operations center, supposedly we have that at the police station at this time, but we need another police station because we were told, and I'm sure this was an overstatement, is that we were having difficulty handling 911 calls at this time because of the advances in technology, et cetera, et cetera. in technology, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's nothing on there about the bay and the harbor, and it's fascinating to me that the number one issue for our city and for all of us, you know, supposedly, is the city-county spheres agreement. Probably 80% of the people don't even know about this, and part of the problem is, is because it's an ad hoc committee, and ad hoc committees, according to the Brown Act, are those committees that are put together for a short duration of time to accomplish something quickly. And watching these past five years, you've had the ad hoc committee for the spheres committee, whatever it's called, since 2003, and this is 2006. I don't think three years is a short duration of time. I think you violated the public trust, and I think you continue to do that in many ways, even though you don't realize it. I know that you all have best intentions in your heart, and I know you're all wonderful people, but there's a lot of people that don't have a lot of trust in, in, in the city right now, and that's the reason why the Green Light Initiative is going to be put on the ballot. And that brings to mind another issue that, that on the, on the general plan update, city staff is going to determine what we vote on and what we don't vote on. Well, how does that work? And I think that there should be, you know, some explanation to the public as to how you decided what items are going to be voted on, or otherwise people are going to get upset and vote no. So these are just some of the things. I guess I lost my train of thoughts, and some of you seem to be so disturbed that I'm actually even speaking, but this isn't anything that people actually care about that much, because they don't even know about it. And so I honestly think, again, that emergency preparedness should be the number one issue. It isn't up there, and I know that you've said that, but, you know, you really need to implement it, because not for anything, I don't live on the peninsula, and I don't live on Balboa Island, but there's 400 children a day that go to Newport Elementary School, and there's a, there has to be a plan, there has to be a warning system, there has to be lights, there have to be all these things. We live in this area here where we want to rebuild the city hall is a tsunami area. Global warming could affect this area. There's all kinds of problems here. Not that I'm saying that this isn't the best site in the end and for economic development and all that, but how could we build a new city hall in this area with the EOC in an area that could flood? I mean, this doesn't make any sense. So, and I agree with traffic management, that was also on my list, is that traffic is a big issue, and however you want to put it, the public needs to get educated, and we need more traffic signalization and synchronization. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on the priority list? Thank you, okay. Next item is the budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought the next thing we would do is, again, once again, quickly review the, the new budget positions that are requested in the '06, '07 budget. We talked about this at the first meeting, but you've had all of the presentations by the departments now, so I thought it would be a good opportunity to review those positions. There are 10 additional positions that are being recommended in this budget. The total salary is almost $700,000. The total benefits is almost $300,000. The startup cost, about $45,000, for a total of, right, a little over $1 million. Starting with the police department, there are two positions. One is a community services officer. That is the cost of the position right there, and this position, if you will remember, is property and evidence. The chief told you that there are 20,000 pieces of property and evidence that come into that office each year. We have one full-time person taking care of that. Other cities have a lot more people, and that one person is just overworked, and we need to do a better job of managing that evidence, and it requires another person in order to help us out there. The facilities maintenance worker, if you remember, was the helicopter maintenance position. This person isn't actually a mechanic, but is a, a person who go gets parts, helps maintain the facilities, helps out in many ways, and this position is already there, but it is under contract, and we think that we have a good person there in order to try and keep this person, stabilize the situation, make this position full-time, and that total cost doing this would be $650 a year, above and beyond what we're paying now in sharing that cost with Costa Mesa. We have four positions in the fire department. The IT communications coordinator, this person would maintain all of the software and the communications equipment that is used by the, by the fire department, number of pieces of communication equipment, a number of software applications. Right now, those applications are basically managed by individuals in the department. A number of those people are retiring. We need to do a better job of, of wrapping all of those responsibilities in one position and coordinating all of that. Then six paramedic firefighter positions were requested by the fire chief. I'm recommending to the city council that three be funded, to the tune of a little over $450,000 a year. We have two public works positions, a principal civil engineer at $147,000 almost, and an associate civil engineer at $112,000. Again, we're becoming a very project-oriented organization, a lot of planning based upon these being city projects, a lot of oversight, oversight of consultants, inspections in the field, and our organization really hasn't changed very much, even though the emphasis on projects really has changed over the last couple of years. So this is in response to that. We're adding more money from the general fund this year, $5 million from the general fund into CIPs. We have a very healthy $41 million CIP budget. There are a lot of other things that come up during the year that the city council would like to see done and done quickly, and it's just trying to manage the projects that the council wants to see happen. So this, there is a staff need, but I see this as responding to the needs of the city council too, in order to try and make things happen. General services position, maintenance worker, one position. Mark Harmon told us that there's a new position needed in the Newport Coast, mainly a street sweeping position, picking up all of the responsibilities for that, and that's what this position would be. And finally, library services position. When we accepted the money from the state for the Mariners' library, we said that we would have a full-time children's librarian. We have done that, but in doing that, we filled that position from an internal position and, or moved, shifted that position over. So now we have more hours that we're operating the Mariners' library, since the new library opened up and we need a position at the Mariners' library in order to backfill the commitment that was made to the state whenever we got the $3.5 million in grant money. So that is a summary. This is a summary page of what we're looking at, $1.03 million for those 10 positions. So if you have any questions over any of those positions, I think we have most of the department heads in which those positions would reside. If you have any questions, need more justification, want to ask any questions about them.
Anybody in the council have any questions?
Yeah, I actually have a question. If the fire chief could come up here. Hi, Tim.
Hi, Councilman Ridgeway.
The, you and I had a discussion, and I just want you to repeat for everybody. On the three new positions that you're requesting for a paramedic firefighter, that's basically to man one more person on a truck.
One of our two truck companies, that's correct.
Yeah, one of our two truck companies, as opposed to an engine. I, I had to, I'm worrying about engines in trucks.
Just to recap, we have eight fire engines. Those are the ones that have hose on them with water, one in each one of our, our fire stations. We have two truck companies, one on the east side at Fashion Island Station, and one here at City Hall at the west side. And this would provide staffing for one of those two truck companies to bring it up to four persons on the truck.
Okay, and the intent is to have at response time, one extra person on that truck to help the larger team?
Yes, for, generally for critical tasks at fires. That's really the, the most instrumental use of this position. By having three, three people, you really are relegated to one task you can perform within the first 10 minutes on the arrival of a fire. By adding a fourth person, you virtually create two, two-person teams where you could do double the task. So it really improves the effectiveness of a truck company operation at the first 10 to 15 minutes of a structure fire.
But at a structure fire, do we not call in also other departments and/or Costa Mesa or?
Yes, we do, but then the issue then is the amount of time is necessary to marshal an effective response team. And we're talking about making a difference in most fires within the first 10 minutes of arrival. Well, obviously, if we were to bring people in from Costa Mesa, they couldn't even arrive within 10 minutes, let alone be effective in, in providing any impact on the situation.
Well, that depends where the fire is.
Absolutely, absolutely, but if you think about Costa Mesa, in 10 minutes, I think anything the other side of, of the bay would be impractical to think that that, they would make an impact.
No, I, I understand. My, my question to you then, and it still is tonight, has the integrity of any of our firefighting during the last four, eight years ever been impaired because we had only three on a truck?
I think that our personnel have done an exemplary job in providing fire responses, and I think that we have worked to the best of our capabilities. This is certainly a request to increase those capabilities. I don't think that we've, can single out the fact that if we didn't have four persons on the truck, we wouldn't have been able to perform as we did. Also firmly believe by adding the personnel, we will increase and improve our performance.
And this recommendation, both internally here, but it is also a recommendation of the, the federal?
Actually, the National Standard for Staffing and Deployment for Fire Organizations calls for four persons on a fire engine and four persons on a fire truck. We don't meet that in any of our, we have three persons on all of our first-line apparatus. This meets the minimum standard for truck company operations. And obviously, in big cities like Los Angeles, Chicago, New York, they actually have staffing on truck companies of five and six people, because they have a lot more fires, a lot more tasks.
Would that be NFPA 1710?
That's the standard, NFPA 1710, that's correct.
That's the national standard?
That's the National Fire Protection Association standard for staffing and deployment for fire department operations. That's the intent.
And have we adopted that?
No, we have not adopted that. We have that included by reference when we adopt the National Fire Code, but we have specifically not adopted NFPA standard 1710 because it requires staffing of four persons on all apparatus, and I don't think that's practical for our city. And so I made a recommendation that we did not adopt NFPA 1710, but that is considered the national standard by most recognized authorities.
Chief, if I could ask a?
Councilman Curry?
Ask a question. As I understand, there are some Fair Labor Standard Acts implications to the staffing proposal that you put forward to enable us to manage overtime more efficiently, efficiently, and effectively. Is that the case? Can you comment on that?
Well, the overtime is really divided into three areas, and I can kind of tell you how we, we control overtime. Overtime costs are divided into vacation relief, so anytime persons are allowed to accrue vacation according to what their, the city policy or MOU is, we have to replace that person when they take vacation off. So that's an overtime assessment. The second is what we call uncontrolled. Anytime someone is unable to fulfill their duties because of an industrial accident injury, a bereavement leave, they call in sick, they have family sick leave, maternity leave, any of the federally protected required leaves that they get, we have to have a body in that seat, so we fill that with overtime. The third is what we call planned overtime, and that's where we say, we want you to be here for this training or for this meeting, and that's the smallest component. When we actually studied about eight years ago, I think that was the last time we did this, we studied the cost of additional relief personnel, hiring extra bodies to fill those vacancies created by vacation relief or uncontrolled absences. We found that based upon the cost of full-time personnel, it was cheaper and easier to manage with overtime personnel.
What I was referring about here was the differential in classification between paramedics and firefighters and our ability to cross-train, continually cross-train our people.
Oh, okay. You're talking about the FLSA issue.
Exactly.
I get it. I went off on another tangent. The FLSA issue really deals with, with firefighter paramedics who will dual role paramedics, serve as both firefighters and paramedics, as long as they have been proven to do firefighting applications under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, they can qualify for what they call a 7K exemption, which means that they will receive overtime after 53 hours in a week, as opposed to single role paramedics who do not do any firefighting, can have to receive overtime at 40 hours a week. So part of the reason we're doing this is to increase the ability for our paramedics also to participate in, in firefighting activities by being temporarily assigned to truck companies for training and firefighting operations, and actually demonstrate that our personnel are staying abreast of firefighting and participating in firefighting activities. So that's one of the side benefits of this staffing proposal, is to demonstrate that we are truly dual role functioning personnel.
Anybody have any questions of the chief?
No questions, chief.
Now, when we have a fire that's close to our borders, and let's say that we were responding, and we would be the first responder into Costa Mesa.
Correct.
Would we go ahead and set up the location and the event and?
Absolutely. The first arriving officer, regardless of jurisdiction, is going to be the first officer in command. Our agreements really state that the first arriving chief officer from that jurisdiction that it belongs in would have the authority, obviously, to assume command, but we don't operate in the absence of a command. So if the fire engine at the Mariners' Station, for example, by you, rolled into Costa Mesa with their first arriving officer on the scene, they could assume command of that incident until relieved by a superior officer, either from Newport or from Costa Mesa.
Did we have a major fire over on 15th, on Superior?
16th and Superior. It was in the city of Costa Mesa, and it was an industrial building in a commercial complex, and it was a pretty good fire.
Did we have a lot of arguments?
We had, there was some doubt as to whether it was, because it was right on the border, so we sent a full assignment, they sent a full assignment, and we actually used our full assignments plus a couple more because it's such a big fire, but we had two engines, a truck, a paramedic unit, and a battalion chief on that fire. And then we sent the paramedics off. After Costa Mesa arrived, we found it was actually in their city. It was a pretty good fire.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, because of the costs involved, you know, I had to gather a lot of information and study this, and I did pull the NFPA 1710 and also looked at deployment studies, and I, and went on the fire training day and put the equipment on, which was really heavy. And it seemed to me that some of the advantage of this was the ongoing backfill, and that it would increase the effectiveness in the overall operation, you know, have a fourth person on site, so you have someone up on the roof with, you know, 50 pounds of clothing, 25 pounds of oxygen, you know, hammering away with an axe, that you then have more backfill at the site. Is that kind of what it is?
It actually does, does particularly assist in safety, particularly when I talk about having two, two-person teams. So now we can buddy up a lot easier on those types of incidents. So instead of having one person having to go to a roof, you could have two. Instead of having one person do one task, you can do two. And a lot of the tasks, as you have mentioned, are quite strenuous, and so we exhaust our personnel pretty fast. So having additional personnel will also provide quite a bit of assistance in that regard.
Mr. Nichols?
Chief, could you explain to me the difference between a truck and an engine?
I sure can. A fire engine is, is equipped with a fire pump, a water tank, and it carries large quantities of hose, but not a lot of other firefighting equipment.
So it doesn't have all the ladders?
Does not have all the ladders, doesn't have the forcible entry tools, doesn't have the tools for ventilation, doesn't carry any of our heavy rescue equipment we use for like high-speed collisions on the freeway, or cliff rescues down in Cronodomar or something like that. So it's, it's the long, the really long truck with the driver in the back, that's a truck company, a ladder truck, and then every fire station has a fire engine in it, which is a lot shorter. And so truck company, truck company operations or ladder truck operations are kind of specialty operations, as opposed to fire engines are like the everyday operation.
And the engines would be more like grass fires and all like?
Trash fires, car fires. They're the attack teams for building fires. So typically, if you had a fire in Cronodomar, the Cronodomar fire engine would initiate fire attack, and then the ladder truck would come over from the Fashion Island Station to support the operation with ventilation, controlling the utilities, going in and affecting salvage operations to reduce damage. They could do search and rescue. So they do specialty operations in support of the firefighting teams.
Would your, your engine company would stay three men?
Yes, all of our engine companies are three-person.
And the truck would go to four?
Yes, only our two trucks would have four-person staffing. All the remainder, remaining units would stay at three-person staffing.
They say only one truck goes to four.
As of right now, that's correct.
Okay.
My original proposal was both, and what's in the budget is one.
Okay, well, my other question is, is the truck company includes a paramedic with it? I mean, is that a part of it, or?
Well, the purpose of putting a truck, a paramedic on the truck, which is what the proposal was, is we have three paramedic the proposal was, is we have three paramedic units, which are two persons in the van, ambulance style. This would give us an opportunity that every third month, a paramedic could rotate out of the ambulance and be assigned to the truck to receive additional experience and training in firefighting operations. As of right now, they don't have any place to rotate to except for the fire engine in Newport Coast, which is a paramedic assessment unit, it's the only one in the city that has a paramedic assigned to it. And so this would give us an additional place to improve the training and experience for paramedic personnel in actual firefighting operations, and that's the purpose for putting them on there, not necessarily to provide paramedic-level services.
Would we be improving his time use as well, or is that something-
No, I think that the amount of workload and the work, time would be the same, it just gives him more experience in a different area, which is pretty important to us.
Right.
Particularly when you look at, we just had a badge-pinning ceremony this morning, and the number-one candidate was a paramedic who's now a fire captain, and all of a sudden, he had a lot of experience in the paramedic van and limited experience in a fire engine, so this gives him, this would, he would be better prepared to promote as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a quick question. The budgetary impact of three now and three next year versus six, for example, at mid-year is essentially the same this year. Let me ask Homer if he has a strong feeling, one way or the other, of those two options in terms of approaching, filling these positions.
I really thought long and hard about filling all six positions, but in order to do that, as you can see, the, the cost of the three paramedic firefighters is about $450,000, and you double that and it's $900,000, as opposed to the cost of the 10 positions being $1,300,000. So the trade-off was three paramedic positions basically for four other, no, it would be six other positions. And I just felt like the impact would be greater throughout the organization by adding these other positions than the three additional paramedic positions. To me, there isn't any question that they aren't needed, but it's a question of priorities, and hopefully next year, we could come back and fund those other three positions.
Thank you.
I think that one of the questions you asked was the budgetary impact, is if we were to fill all six positions in January, would it have the same impact on our current budget as filling them all now in July? And I think it would have the same impact on the budget, would not increase it. But what it does is it establishes those six positions, so next year, we'd be fully funding six positions as part of the regular budget as opposed to three. So I think that's the question Homer would ask, is, is he interested in obligating himself for six positions next year?
Thank you.
Well, I just make one final comment, that is, the benefit package and the pension funds are a consideration for as long-term, and I think we really have to be looking at that. As you know, we're having a difficult time funding the pension right now.
Thank you. All right, Homer, continue on the budget. I wish I could do, we only have a public comments on the 10 positions. Seeing none, let's, just a second. Seeing none, let's, Keith, did you have something?
Just one quick thing. I did have the opportunity to go and visit with the chief in the evidence locker at the police facility, and if there is any position that's in the budget that's justified, it's that one. And I'm very pleased to see it in this, in this budget. Our ability to keep track of evidence as it changes and becomes more technical in terms of DNA evidence and all of that is critically important, and I think this is a very, very important position augmentation that we're making today.
If you're a criminal defense attorney, you don't believe that, but.
Mr. Mayor, the next thing I wanted to do is look at the supplemental budget.
Wait a second, stop for a minute. Mr. Selig.
Yeah, where do you see the long-term growth of staff positions in the city going? I was looking in the, in the resource allocation plan, and it had the last five or six-year growth in positions, and have you gone out and made projections where we're heading, or are we just doing this a year at a time? Because I saw in there that like when we added Newport Coast, there was a big jump in employees, and then every year, it's like four to six, nine employees here and there, we're just kind of, kind of creeping up, and it's like an 80-person increase in employees or something like that since 2000. And I'm just wondering how you see the, is there some point it's going to peak and we're going to, we're going to be absorbing all of the services that we're providing with the staff that we have, or is it something that's just going to keep growing incrementally each year like this? Because it doesn't seem that much, although that's not, that's a lot of money that you had up there, but in terms of the total personnel budget, but each year, we're just, seems like we're just creeping up there.
Congressman Selig, I think that's a very good question, and I think it is a, partially a function of our community, which is a, a community that has very high expectations and that make new requests on the city council each and every year. And a lot of those are relatively small requests. I mean, we'll be looking at, you know, funding doggy bags, free doggy bags, the city personnel will put out in 56 different places and who knows how many. And it's the incremental addition to job responsibilities that, you know, one thing in and of itself normally doesn't create a new position, but over time, it's, it's the public response and trying to make contact with, with the resident, you know, within 24 hours after that they have made contact with you, and trying to be very responsive to the public. It's the incremental creep that we keep trying to chase. I know we lost about 100 positions in the early 90s, and I think we were at about six, I think we were maybe at about 750 positions in the early 90s, and now we're up to 800 positions. So over the last seven years, we have added about 150 positions, and one year we added 30 with the addition of the Newport Coast. Certainly, if we annex West Santa Ana Heights, I don't see any positions going on with that. We don't pick up trash, we're basically doing the kinds of things there already, so it isn't any new land increase, although banning rats certainly has some potential for some additional services. But I, I think we are chasing after a lot of other things, that there are a lot of projects. The, I think the council has higher expectations now than they did seven years ago when I first got here in terms of, of public response, and it's kind of hard to explain, you almost have to experience it in, in order to know what you're talking about. And I see Councilman Ridgeway, you know, shaking his head.
I might add to that, another thing I think that maybe drives more staff is, in the last 10 years, the number of laws and new regulations that become, that are adopted either by the, the state or the federal with regards to the new NPDS, all the, all the new laws that have driven water quality, personnel rules that are added every year. So a lot of those things drive administration here in the city to implement and to administer. So those also will add to the incremental duties that, that create the need for new employees.
Like playground safety, having somebody once a week to look and check all the equipment to make sure that it's safe because of lawsuits, and basically, that's what's required. We have park ranger program. I mean, in bits and pieces, it seems like because the demand for land is, is so great and the land value is so high that when people buy here, they have very high expectations as far as what they're going to get for their property taxes. And it seems like that demand is what we're trying to, trying to catch up to, and that probably isn't a very good answer as to where eventually we're headed, but it's the best I can provide.
Thank you. Let's get into the budget before we run out of time.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to take a look at the budget checklist, and that item is in your agenda. It is for the budget approval item number 37. Just to see if you had any questions that you wanted, last-minute questions that staff could maybe do a little research and come back to you with any answers tonight when you have that discussion. Is there anything there that you want to discuss? Not that you can't discuss that later in, in the meeting, but are there any questions? Do we have any people here that may be able to address any of the items that are on the supplemental budget item checklist? And what that staff report said is that we have supplemental request of about $2.6 million, and that basically with some-
It's item 35, Homer, not 37.
Did I say 37? Okay, I meant 35. I'm sorry, looking in the wrong place myself. Okay, we do have the money to cover everything on that checklist, but that doesn't mean some new things won't be added later on tonight. You certainly can take anything off of the checklist. There was some discussion at the last meeting, I know, regarding Michael's Media and maybe some of the other issues as to whether you want to fund that. That decision will be made tonight. I just wanted to give one more opportunity to see if there were any questions that you had of staff that maybe we didn't have answers for, but between now and the time that you would be discussing, we would be able to provide an answer for.
Okay. Any councilmember have any specific item that they would like to bring up?
Well, I'll re-mention Michael's Media, Homer just alluded to that. I think a lot of what I've ever seen produced by Mr. Michaels is redundant for what the city produces in our Profiles in Government program and other programs that are produced by our Public Information Officer. And I have, you know, I asked two weeks ago to see what we get for this and, or some justification for this expense, and I haven't seen any, and so I will reiterate my objection to that expenditure.
Mr. Nichols, do you have anything?
Not at the moment.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, over the weekend, I was speaking with a Newport Heights resident, and they expressed, I guess dismay, they wanted the traffic calming to be funded more, and maybe those on the Traffic Calming Committee could shed some insight on their request.
Yeah, well, I think we've developed a comprehensive program of applying for traffic calming throughout the city. Newport Heights has been a focus area for a long time, Newport Heights as well as the Cliff Haven communities, which both Don and I represent. And I think we've developed a, a plan for, that can be used citywide, but also specifically for Newport Heights. I think we have, what is it, $200,000 in the budget, $180,000?
And 100 is going to the, that area, and then another 100 is going up to Keith Curry's district up in-
Newport Heights, or Newport Hills.
Newport Hills.
Yeah, and so, you know, there's a, there was a study done, it was a significant study, it identified up to $1 million of improvements for the Newport Heights area. You know, I don't know that all of those recommendations will ever be enacted, but certainly we're, you know, the $100,000 is a start. Personally, I don't think it's the kind of thing where we just want to throw a bunch of money in there and find out what works and what doesn't work. I think if we take a little bit of a slower approach, try a few of these things, get some community reaction, and then, you know, as I've represented to the, to the folks in that area, the leaders in that area, that it will be an ongoing program. I expect that there will be additional funding in years to come, but that, you know, we, we have identified at least three or four fixes up there that we hope will, you know, help them with their problem. And, you know, I see it as a start. I mean, it's been a long time in coming, I, I identify with their frustration, but I think we're finally here, and we have a program, and we've identified some things to do, and we're going to go ahead and do those.
Okay, so it's a healthy start to a, probably an ongoing program.
I think so. I mean, I think it's, it's, it resonates with what was said earlier about the priority list and about traffic in general in the city, and I think that that's one of the initiatives that the city is now taking towards, you know, real solutions to problems in town. And so, you know, I mean, if we go to every neighborhood in, in the city, there will be millions and millions of dollars worth of stuff, and I don't think we have that in our budget, but certainly the, the start that we've taken is, I think, a good one, and I look forward to seeing the Public Works folks implement those, and I think we'll, you know, we'll see some good things come out of that.
Anything else, Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Nichols?
I would like to understand what's going on for the Coast Highway medians improvements phase two. We've had some things taken out of that program. We're putting in the crossing light, I guess that's 120,000 of it, is that?
I think it's actually-
170,000.
Is that, that's in addition to?
Yes, that's a separate item tonight that you'll be dealing with.
Well, I would like to get some feeling for what this is, that, what this item is, median improvements.
Mr. Selig?
Well, what it is, it's completing the landscaping that was done in the medians in Coast Highway, and it's not constructing any new medians, it's just going in and re-landscaping existing medians to match the, the medians that were done last year. And it's actually, all the plans are completed on it, and they're ready to go out to bid, and it was just that we didn't have the money last year to fund the whole project, so this is just to finish up a project that was started last year. And again, it's not any new medians, it's just going in the existing raised medians and putting in landscaping.
Some of the landscaping we put in has, has really been a view stopper. It's not helping out too much lately. I mean, it's grown high enough now that it's over the hoods of cars, and we're beginning to have a view impairment on it. I'm just wondering, that's something we need to look at on this. Will we have a $300,000 cost a year, basically, to keep that up? Is that what we're looking at?
No, the maintenance is very minimal, this is just a one-time construction cost.
Mr. Nichols, I would ask that you, if you feel that there's some problems out there, I would ask that you get together with Mark Harmon and the traffic engineer and point those out so that those items can be corrected. But that would be a big help to them if you could let them know the places that you think are a problem. Anybody else have any other? Pardon?
We've tried to do that.
You can meet with Mr. Harmon right after study session and point those out and/or set up an appointment, and I'm sure he'll be glad to meet with you anytime that you're available.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other specific items that they would like to bring forward to discuss at this time, so that perhaps it'll shorten up our discussion this evening? Anybody from the audience wish to discuss items on the checklist?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, appointed council members. Item number one is for $290,000 for the Corona Del Mar High School pool. And the last time I was here, you were discussing this, and there was some discussion as to how much the school district was going to be pledging, and I didn't know if you've had time to find out how much they are going to be pledging to this project, considering the fact that we spent recently over $1 million on Newport Loop Road for the elementary school up in Newport Coast that they didn't contribute anything to. And we also redid the pavement of the Corona Del Mar High School, which the school district didn't, I don't think, participate that much money in, and the fact that no one ever gets to see a replay of the school district meetings, I don't know what time they're on, maybe Saturday at 5:00 AM in the morning or something, but the school district, I mean, they're not seen, and they have a giant budget there also. And some genius, a thinacity, decided that we should meet on the same night as the, as the Newport Mesa School District meets, which I don't think really serves our public again. But that wasn't my decision, that was just made, we went from Monday to Tuesday, and God forbid, we had decided to do, you know, instead of second and fourth, first and third, then it would have worked well for everyone in the community, but anyway, that's not this issue. So I have a question about that, because even though there is a need for a, we found out that there is a need for a, for an aquatic center in the city, and I don't think that the Corona Del Mar High School is serving the entire need of our community, as a result of which, I would think that there should be something on here for a feasibility study to see what we can do up at Coyote Canyon Landfill as part of the Spheres Committee. There's over an acre, thanks to Councilmember Ridgeway, we found out that you could put a pool up there. So that's something I would like, but I'm just a person. Under the fire department, for disaster preparedness mailing, $28,000, one-time mailer with the $2 million, $200 million budget, I think we should be able to mail out more than one time to the residents here. And I remember recently going to a meeting at East Bluff, and I couldn't find it on this list, and maybe it's somewhere else, but they had asked for, for a sound wall because the expansion of the lanes and the amount of traffic and stuff and everything, and I think they were promised a sound wall, or they were going to discuss having a sound wall, and I don't know, I've never seen a sound wall being discussed at any of these meetings, and I, I think that they have a lot of homes there, and they're a large community, and they have expensive homes also, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed. That's just something that, I'm looking at this list, and it was in my notes from a meeting I went to. As a matter of fact, Nancy Gardner was there at the meeting, and it was for G-PAC, and it was because of traffic concerns on Jamboree, and so that was one of the solutions. So those are the things that I would like you to consider. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Homer, could you comment on the, the budget for the school district on the swimming pool?
I think Leslie Daigle has some information there.
We did talk with Paul Reed, or Homer communicated with the staff of Paul Reed, and they, they will pledge a certain amount, and then after that conversation- and they will pledge a certain amount, and then after that conversation, the parent, what Paul asked is that the parent group come before the school district, he felt that that would have certain pressure and say, "Look, you know, the city council is pledging $290,000 and not going to give us that money unless a combination of the school district and the community comes up with the remaining 71%."
Yes, it's my understanding that Paul said the school district is going to be budgeting 300,000 if the parents come forth with a larger project rather than just the replastering, then that 300,000 would go towards that project, he wouldn't commit any more at that time, but wanted to see what kind of fundraising would be done by the parents.
Right, and from what I understand, I think it was in a matter of a week, the Water Polo parents raised about 50,000, so there's, there's some fundraising capacity in the community, and so I think part of it is the city's commitment to help out with that.
Mr. Rosatki?
On the same topic, I think we clarified it at our last meeting, and I think Leslie echoed it just now, but I just want to make sure it's absolutely clear that our pledge here of 290,000 will be 29%, up to 290,000, 29% of whatever project that they come up with, up to a million dollars. And so, does that winds up being a $300,000 project, or 90,000, or $87,000, or whatever?
Yes, you are absolutely clear, correct, we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment?
Good afternoon, members of council and city staff. My name is Peggy Fort, and I'm a resident and business owner in Newport Beach, and I'm here today to represent the Newport Beach Restaurant Association as their consultant because President Dan Marciano is out of town, and he asked me if I would speak on behalf of himself and our board of directors. First, we would like to start by sincerely thanking the city council for its ongoing support of the restaurant industry in Newport Beach. We value the successful, long-term, positive relationship that has been established between the restaurant industry and the city. As you know, the Newport Beach Board of Director, Restaurant Association Board of Directors is proposing the first annual Newport Beach Restaurant Week as an integral part of its fiscal '06-'07 marketing plan of work, and your positive initial response to the Restaurant Association's supplemental budget request of $50,000 to help launch this first-year promotion during recent one-on-one meetings was very encouraging. As a follow-up to the submitted detailed proposal, we would like to clarify the following points specific to funding, which we hope will help you during your final decision-making process on this request. Upon approval, this proposed citywide promotion will take place Sunday, January 21st through Thursday, January 25th of '07. The goal is to join close of 100 of Newport Beach's finest restaurants for awe-inspiring, three-course, fixed-price meals prepared especially for this gourmet dining event for the entire community to enjoy. The Restaurant Association Board of Directors voted to enthusiastically move forward and launch this inaugural citywide dining promotion upon the approval of the proposed $50,000 initial funding request only. This is a conservative initial request and is less than one-third of the total proposed working budget to professionally launch a campaign at this level. Full supplemental budget funding is imperative to whether or not the NBRA moves forward, and unfortunately, at this time, partial funding will most likely not allow the NBRA to successfully move forward and launch this first-year campaign. Upon approval, the NBRA also voted to allocate 25% of its current total fiscal '06-'07 working budget, or $25,000, in an effort to match the proposed city's supplemental allocation of $50,000, and is pleased to offer the City of Newport Beach full benefits as a sponsor of this event. Industry and corporate sponsorship are the primary revenue generating source for the citywide dining campaign to successfully reach the total proposed budget of $165,000. As the event grows in future years, it is anticipated that sponsorship will completely self-fund this campaign. As you know, the NBRA has already formed a successful partnership with the Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau, and is currently working on a promotion with American Express. The NBRA is depending on this sponsorship for specific hospitality and tourism industry relations promotion to drive overnight business from regional markets. This potential sponsorship is in addition to the city's supplemental budget request of $50,000, which was to be used for seed money. The Restaurant Week promotion includes an aggressive and tangible marketing and public relations campaign to promote Newport Beach as a dining destination on a local and regional level, increase revenues, drive traffic to NewportBeachDining.com, create community participation, and support local charity. Additionally, the NBRA is particularly interested in the valuable hospitality industry partnerships, positive long-term impact, and new business that will develop as a result of Restaurant Week. Everyone will benefit from this campaign, Newport Beach residents who dine out, out-of-town patrons, the restaurants themselves, the city, and the destination. Again, we thank you in advance for your consideration of this first-year community-wide event. Your support of the marketing efforts of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association and the economic development of the restaurant industry, which is the largest generator of sales tax revenue in the City of Newport Beach, is imperative to our success. At this time, I would like to answer any specific questions that you may have on this proposal on behalf of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association. Thank you.
Any councilmembers have any comments?
I have one. I think that what we have shown in the budget is that we've heard that the Convention and Visitors Bureau is going to give you 30,000, and we have in our checklist $20,000, so that gives you the total of 50,000. Are you saying that that is not going to work?
Correct, Mayor Webb. Basically, the proposal that was submitted by the Restaurant Association and our Board of Directors was for $50,000 of seed money to launch this campaign. The sponsorship with the Visitors Bureau is a specific niche market campaign that we will be working with American Express to drive regional and hospitality and tourism industry campaign marketing toward.
As a part of the campaign, the $50,000 would go towards, how much is the Restaurant Association going to be contributing to that campaign?
$25,000 initially, and then the, basically, the contribution from our boards and the in-kind marketing and stuff has a large value as well. That's basically a quarter of our budget from next year.
So I don't quite understand why the city should put together an advertising program and fund 75% of it for a one-week activity for the restaurants within the city. It would seem like to me we would be looking towards our contributions to various different programs being more of a year-round program rather than a one-week program.
Well, to clarify that, it's not 75%. The Restaurant Association is planning on retaining a professional marketing firm to bring in corporate sponsorships, and the entire budget for this campaign is proposed to be 165,000, that's nap counting in-kind media and in-kind sponsorships, some of which we've already secured.
So our contribution would then be roughly a third of your overall program?
It's less than a third, correct. It's 50,000 out of 165,000 dollar first-year campaign.
Councilmember Daigle?
As I recall, when the request came in, the city manager talked to the Conference and Visitor Bureau on behalf of the city and asked if they could help out, so I think that's, as I recall, that's where the participation came from.
Well, I guess I didn't know that the Restaurant Association was going to be approaching the Visitor Bureau, so before I knew that, I approached the Visitor Bureau and said that I thought it would be a good connection for them, and suggested that maybe they would, you know, provide some money, seed money for this to happen, so it sounds like it was the Restaurant Association's plan all the time to go to the Visitor Bureau and request some money from them.
That's, that's correct, and I think the Visitors Bureau is actually very interested in wanting to be a part of this campaign for fulfillment of their own mission, which is to drive overnight room stays to our hotels.
Councilmember Nichols, you had your...
Yes, this is a, 50,000 is a separate contribution, they're going to separately contribute how much, the Visitor Bureau?
It's proposed 30,000, it's not secure yet, we actually have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with American Express to discuss the sponsorship, but what we initially discussed was a $30,000 contribution, which would be in conjunction with promotion with American Express.
Just for kicks, what is our tax off of this each year? I mean, is this...
Through the restaurant industry?
Yeah.
Well, basically, in 2005, the restaurant industry's sales totaled 23,468,111, and Newport Beach restaurant, the restaurant industry in general was 18.8% of all sales tax generated, which is about 4.4 million dollars. It was number one as far as the industry generation of sales tax.
So 4.4 million was the restaurant industry in a total, you're saying?
Correct.
And what fraction of that 4.4 million is the sales tax that comes back to the city?
That is how much the city got from, sales tax from the restaurant industry last year, 4.4 million. And currently, the Restaurant Association has a working budget of approximately $100,000 a year.
So that would be, if we have 23 million dollar worth of sales, that's only 230,000?
I guess I have a, in that light, Mr. Nichols, you'd end up having to, for the city to recoup the $50,000 in sales tax, you'd have to have 200,000 $25 meals. That works out to be an additional 400 meals per restaurant, per day, for five days.
I think that, yeah, I think that the approach the Restaurant Association takes with a campaign like this is really more far-reaching and looking at the long-term benefits that a campaign can bring to not only the restaurateurs, the community, and the destination through the marketing and publicity and incremental business and so on. Hopefully, additional tax revenue as well.
Is it 23 million that the restaurant generated, or like 230 million? 23 million, I mean, I can probably pick six or seven restaurants in town that probably generate that on their own.
The highest grossing restaurant in town is the Cheesecake Factory at about $12 million, actually $14 million.
But that's sales tax, we're not talking about their gross revenue.
So you're saying they generate 23 million in sales tax?
No, that wasn't said.
I just want to clarify what the number she used was.
It says for, what I was given was revenue totals from the revenue office here at the city, and we were told that 4.4, or 4 million, 431,293 dollars were generated through the restaurant industry sales tax, which was 18.8% in all sales, which was the leading generator of sales tax revenue, ahead of auto sales this year.
Okay, because you didn't, I don't think that's what you said earlier, we didn't understand it that way, but thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Okay, does any other councilmembers have any questions? Mr. Nichols?
Well, the 165,000 is about 5% of that total sales tax, right? That's how I figured that out, but I'm not trying to...
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Anybody else wish to comment on items?
Yeah.
The city attorney needs to turn their cell phone.
Yeah. Well, pull the battery off.
It goes through the machine.
Yeah, shred it.
Put it in a vibrate.
My only comment, I, I think Homer went to the Conference and Visitors Bureau, we relied on that in budgeting this item, and at no time was I under the impression in meeting with the Restaurant Association that they would be seeking those kind of dollars. I guess as a compromise, I'm trying to reach a compromise here, I would just bolster our 20,000 to 30, and hopefully, they're grateful for that. I'm not sensing that tonight, and I think that's, that's an unfortunate circumstance, but I will recommend that I go to 30,000.
Any other comments from the council? Realizing that we're going to have to actually make this...
Might use some of the Ensenada Boat Race money and put it in there.
Can I comment on that, Mayor Webb?
Sure.
Of course, the Restaurant Association would be very much appreciative of any additional funding we receive. We're saying that there is, there was a projected budget of incoming sponsorship revenue that we were going to be soliciting, once we did get the initial funding from both the city and the Restaurant Association, to equate to over $100,000 in corporate sponsorships, two presenting sponsors at the $25,000 level, three at the $10,000 level, and the Visitors Bureau was actually one of those that we had approached because of the connection with American Express. And unfortunately, it's not a feeling of whether or not we are appreciative of any additional funding, it's a matter of whether or not we have the funds to launch a campaign professionally at the level that the Restaurant Association is interested in looking toward doing. And, you know, I just, at this point, if we were given partial funding, I can't say that the board is even going to move forward on it.
Then should we recommend no contribution? I mean, I'm troubled by that comment.
I am too, because all it would take is $100 per restaurant to make up $10,000, and if this is going to be that great a deal for the restaurants, why aren't they helping to pay for it?
They are, Mayor Webb. Our board is going to be asking for $150 buy-in from each individual restaurant, and if you look back to the mission of the Restaurant Association, the Restaurant Association is here to support the restaurants of Newport Beach and to provide benefit to them, and so our board felt strongly, especially for a first-year event, not to put the heavy buy-in on the individual restaurants, because again, we wanted to get 100-plus restaurants to participate in this campaign. Now, next year, or as the event grows, there's a very good chance that we could up that. Currently, San Diego does an event, and their restaurants buy in a $1,500 contribution to their campaign. This year, a first-year event, our board felt strongly that we wanted to focus on participation, focus on a successful event, and not expect the restaurants to contribute more than a minimal buy-in.
Which is $15,000 for 100 restaurants?
Correct.
Okay, so, I guess that if they were matching what the city were matching, I think I'd feel much more comfortable about it.
Are you talking about the individual restaurants, or the Restaurant Association and the individual?
Restaurant Association and the restaurants were matching what the city...
Well, if you look at $25,000 from the Restaurant Association, $15,000 from the individual restaurants, plus the corporate and industry sponsorship that we will be attaining through the seed money, that's well over the $50,000 contribution that we're asking for. And again, it's not a matter of not being gracious and appreciative of whatever support we can get, it's really just a matter of being able to do this or not.
You know, since I were picking on Peggy here a little bit, she's just doing her job as representative of the Restaurant Association, so I apologize for that. And I think, you know, you really kind of have to listen to what she's saying, I mean, it is a $165,000 cash budget here, aside from the in-kind and all that, because that's something else. And we're talking about 50,000, it is about 30%, so it's not like we're providing the bulk of the funds, or certainly the majority of the funds. It is a significant amount of money, and I would expect that it's not going to be an ongoing, that this is more of a one-time, or maybe one or two years, and that it's kind of to kick-start it, to get some involvement of the restaurants in it, to test, to put your toe in the water, to prove to them that it is a viable marketing tool, and that as time goes on, the $150 buy-in will become a $300 buy-in, or a $500 buy-in, as the restaurants in town see the success of the program and decide that they want to participate. You know, certainly, demand always increases the price, and so, and if it's not that case, then Restaurant Week will not survive, and we won't have a continuing investment in it, so.
So the total budget for the Restaurant Week is 165,000, or the annual program for the Restaurant Association is 165?
The annual, the annual Restaurant Association budget is 100,000. The marketing budget and the operations budget to launch this event at the level that we're proposing to do is 165,000. That is in addition to the Restaurant Association's working budget.
So you'd be spending 265,000 this year?
Correct.
More like 75,000 is for other, 25,000 is in that 165,000 budget.
Exactly, because 25 of the working budget is going to be allocated towards supporting this event, should it move forward.
Right, so there is a little overlap there.
Thank you.
But it's close to a quarter of a million dollars.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just mention...
Mr. Curry?
For those of you that may have participated in an event like this, I've participated in New York and Port of Puyol, it's a great event, it really does drive business, and in January, it drives business during a time when it's otherwise slow, and of course, we do benefit in terms of incremental tax revenue when that happens. I really think it's a great way to help put our Newport Beach restaurants on the map to establish ourselves as a destination, and I'll be supporting the full $50,000 when it comes up for discussion, and hopefully, we'll be able to launch this program this year successfully.
And I will as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment from the public?
Thank you.
You came all the way down here, Sherry, you better say something.
Good evening, everyone. I am Sherry Drury, I am the Vice President of the Restaurant Association, I also run Wellmers Patio, where I see most all of you all the time, so hi. I'm here basically to, to hope to sway you a little bit so we can get our budget working, and we can launch this event, which we think will be an... and we can launch this event, which we think will be an incredible event for the restaurant industry, for Newport Beach. And does anybody have any questions that, from my perspective, I could possibly answer for you, that would make this a little bit more clear?
I don't see any. Thank you very much for coming down.
So, thank you very much for considering our proposal.
Anybody else wish to comment on anything related to the budget? Okay, does the council have any further questions for Homer on the checklist items? Okay, then we move the next item on the agenda.
Next item wanted to do is have Dave Kiff review water quality grants that the city has obtained, and what kind of obligations those have with them. But I want to make sure that council has enough time to deal with any issues, any budget issues that you may have, so I want to stop right now and, and ask, are there, is there anything else that anybody on the City Council would like to discuss budget-wise before we get into this presentation, or that will probably take us through six o'clock?
Do we have any other questions from the council? You must have done a superb job on budget.
I don't take that for granted, that no questions is good news, but...
I have one, Homer.
A quick second.
The diesel exhaust on the fire stations, I, they don't run these engines, except when they drive them in, right?
Well, when they start them up. So that, this is an apparatus that will capture the exhaust, so that the, the people aren't inhaling that. It is a safety issue, and I think we have most of our stations that have that equipment that will accept that exhaust and then deal with it, but not all of our stations are so equipped.
As they start the trucks up, they tend to, the exhaust collects up in the upper areas, and sometimes it permeates into facilities that are upstairs, and so this is in a ventilation system that, what they've been working on for, what, six or seven years, getting them all retrofitted? Okay, I guess we're ready to, Dave, are you ready for your water quality?
Yes. It's just boardwalk or park, like. Sorry.
That's what it looks like, maybe that, that price range, too.
Oops. Two hundred dollars, did not pass though.
Well, inflated.
We're one short, Dave.
One short, okay.
Which one have you, you've got two down there. It's like musical paperwork. Your odd man out loves it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The city manager had asked me to prepare what is actually a work in progress, so let me apologize for that at the start. This is a list of the water quality and water quality-related projects, grants that we have received or are within the application process, and this is probably over the last, say, three to four years. I do have a version of this I can put up on the screen, it's a little hard to read because it's all on one page, that's why I gave you a copy in your handout there. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on each one, I'm just going to buzz down them, and we put this in the context of maybe some comments that Councilmember Nichols made earlier about the kind of resources we spend on water quality and water-related things. And I'm going to point out to you each one, too, that I think is an obligation that the city would have regardless of whether or not we received a grant. So in other words, to me, these are opportunities to use someone else's money, in some cases the taxpayers of the entire state, to perform something that the general fund would otherwise have to cover. So, just running those down, we've got a bioswale project that's actually going in this week, or next, actually, I think it's already started up by the Pogue Hospital area to clean up some of the water that comes into the Arches. The second item was a, a number of storm drain-to-sewer diversions, that we actually stopped that process after finishing one diversion. The other four contain too much flow to effectively be good diversions. In other words, there's so much runoff coming off those watersheds, that we actually couldn't physically divert that without overwhelming the sewer system. The third one is a Buck Gully restoration grant that we worked on with Surf Rider Foundation. Then we get into three different Big Canyon Creek restoration grants.
Can I ask a question? Could you give me some idea of, of the, the time limits that we're supposed to keep these things under? In other words, is the, is the grant, it's a funding grant to get you started, but then you're supposed to keep this, like the, the channel, that in Arches Boulevard, we're supposed to keep that project in operation on our money, right? For how long?
Councilmember Nichols, in some cases, specifically where there is a CBI grant, and that stands for Clean Beaches Initiative, and you'll see a couple of CBIs there under, for instance, the Arches Bioswale. Those grants are conditioned based on the recipient's pledge to maintain the facilities for up to twenty-one years.
So, so that one would have a twenty-one-year maintenance life on us?
We would have to ma, in order to accept that grant, we pledged to maintain the bioswale for twenty-one years.
Now, would that, just on that one, because I just want to try and scope what we're looking at, does that really imply, then, that that bioswale, which, this is along Newport Boulevard, I believe?
Yes.
Then that land is also sort of dedicated to a bioswale for twenty-one years?
Correct, it's Caltrans land right now, and we have an easement for, to cut, that covers twenty-one years of use on that.
But if we were to have to expand that highway, or for some reason, supposing they tried to go underground at Newport Boulevard, would that, that might entail land that's now in a bioswale? Because it...
That's correct, Councilman.
And, and if that were the case, then what would happen?
Well, we would probably have to work with the, work with the state to refund the grant. I think the chances are...
You could include it as a part of the construction project, and just move it over as the new dollars.
That's correct.
I don't think, I don't see that that's a significant problem.
Say that again, Don.
You could include as a part of the new project for the widening, the installation of that bioswale, because they're, the, the new construction is going to be just as responsible for taking care of runoff as the old projects.
But you might need the...
And we may even come up with more comprehensive programs the later we get into this, so that...
No, I don't mean that, but we might need that land where the bioswale is for the improvement. We would then have to buy out on about a dollar-per-dollar basis?
Well, that would be negotiated with the state, and as the mayor's saying, you would include that buyout if it was required as a part of the undergrounding project.
Yeah, it probably, it's, it's another bioswale of equal or greater magnitude.
No, no, it doesn't require that, you don't have to match it on an acre-for-acre basis. You just have to repay the state for the grant if you didn't use it to its full term.
Okay, but, and that's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
So there's a twenty, in that particular case, there'd be a twenty-one-year maintenance plus a buyout of it, or a replacement, or...
No, it's either or.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And remember, those only apply, that twenty-one-year term only applies to the ones that say CBI, or Clean Beaches Initiative.
Okay, now, and, but, are, so some of these do not have a hooker in them like that?
That's correct.
I, I'm sorry to use that word, but I don't know another word.
Okay.
I, I guess that I hate to see it characterized that way, because these projects are beneficial projects, they're projects to try to help our environment, they're trying to, to make sure that we don't have polluted water going into the bay, and I think that, that one of the things that this accomplishes is, is it tries to improve the quality of our bay, and this is something that is maybe on the cutting edge, and, and we have the opportunity to, to be a part of that, and show that we really care, and we're willing to split in a little money on this, and, and the annual maintenance costs are something, everything that we do takes maintenance. And we usually don't build something unless it's worthwhile to start with. I personally feel this is a worthwhile project, and we should be willing to do the maintenance.
I'm not really considering that, I, I'm not saying anything bad about that, Don, but for example, these obloids, you know, they have such low efficiency, that if they were requiring replacement, or, or we actually went to something that had a little more efficiency...
We deleted those at our last meeting.
No, no, no.
Actually, we deleted it this meeting.
Yeah, Councilman, and, Councilman Ridgeway, yeah, tonight's agenda item proposes canceling that project.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm pleased only because I know that they have about a zero efficiency, so I, but I didn't, I, I would like to kind of try and, and scope, if we could, just what our continuing obligation or our...
As you go through the list, Dave, can you please try to indicate what you know is our maintenance...
I, I will, I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor, and as I said, this is a work in progress, so, Councilman, that's a good idea for a new column, that, an estimated maintenance expense. So, just continuing on down there, and actually, those first three items are all arguably required by TMDLs, or Total Maximum Daily Loads, most associated with fecal coliform. And indeed, the Buck Gully one, also, we expect to see a Total Maximum Daily Load implemented for Buck Gully because of bacteria. It was listed on the Clean Water Act's so-called Section 303D list, which means it's an impaired water body.
Can I ask, I want to just bring out, though, we're the lead on this, so nobody else is getting impaired water body lists, that they're forced to do this to...
That's not correct, Councilman. Up and down the state, in every regional water board region, all nine regions, there are lists thirty and forty pages long of Section 303D lists, listed water bodies that are subject to TMDLs. We were the first on the West Coast to receive four TMDLs for Upper and Lower Bay, and that was as a result of a lawsuit by Defend the Bay. But since then, the process has continued aggressively on the regional board's part and on US EPA's part.
And these are actually being answered by other people?
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
Up and down the state.
Maybe it's a question for another study session. From a planning perspective, I mean, how are we tying all this together, and where are we looking at master planning, comprehensively planning, you know, Back Bay and Bay? Maybe you can address that.
Okay, I'll talk a little bit about that.
Okay, thanks.
Continuing down the list there, there are three grants associated with Big Canyon Creek. This is a little bit farther step away from TMDL implementation requirement, but the, the community came to us, and when I'm saying the community, it's the Upper Newport Bay Nationals and Friends, and said, hey, we're, we'd like you, city, to work on restoring Big Canyon Creek. So we went ahead and applied for those grants. One of them, the second one, from the State Water Resources Control Board, is directly tied to the Newport Bay fecal coliform TMDL, because that water quality analysis as a result of that will help us comply with the TMDL, since Big Canyon Creek is such a large input into the Upper Bay. I'm going to continue down, the Newport Coast Watershed Grant, that's one that Councilmember Dagel is indeed a master plan for the Newport Coast. It's not a master plan for the city, but it's indeed the Newport Coast section. We'll see a couple of them like that. The Rhine Channel Remediation is a, a project that, a grant that we received to study the, the toxicity of the sediment in the Rhine Channel and develop a plan to remediate that. And you've received one briefing on that, and you'll get another one about the results of that study. The ASBS Implementation Grant, that's one that helps us actually implement some of the things in a later grant, so this isn't the best order, but I'll, I'll jump down and talk about that.
Can you refresh our memories on what ASBS is?
ASBS stands for Area of Special Biological Significance, and we have about three and a half miles of ASBS, more than almost any jurisdiction in California, because we have Crystal Cove State Park and the Little Corona area. The next one is the Oloeed Project that we spoke about. Then we've applied for a couple of grants to help upgrade irrigation systems, to continue a rebate program associated with smart irrigation controllers. So this is a, a grant through the Bureau of Reclamation. You'll see one more like that. It has to do actually with that one down near the bottom of Water Budget Billing System. And actually, some of the Newport Coast Watershed Grant money can be used for smart timers.
And this, this is for public watering, or is this for private?
No, it could be private HOAs, wherever we think we get the most bang for the buck.
Okay, I had, I, just to comment, one of our ex-planning commissioners who's served quite a long time called me and pointed out that we seem to have a lot of watering taking place on the roads, that's flowing down the roads, so the, maybe we need to look at it a little bit.
And I, I think, Mark Herman left, but maybe a good thing to discuss with him, either in a study session, is the extent of the smart timers that are installed throughout the city. So, it's a longer-term process, but we are moving towards more weather-based and moisture-based irrigation controls.
Now, this is also what we were offering homeowners, isn't it?
That's right, same thing, but a different grant. That's not listed here, because that grant ended.
Thank you.
The next one is a Harbor Area Management Plan. Councilmember Selich is fairly familiar with this, and Councilmember Dagel, this speaks again to a master plan for the different types of uses and impacts to the harbor, including eelgrass, including bacterial inputs, including toxicity. And the hope is to take this harbor, Councilmember Ridgeway, too, I've been with it too long. That's right. This is a, this is an opportunity, we hope, to establish, among other things, a baseline amount of eelgrass in the Lower Bay, so that once that's established, we can allow private property owners who have eelgrass under their docks to not have to mitigate, because we have enough eelgrass across the lower harbor. And this, this would be a nice goal if we can achieve it. So far, the resources agencies are willing to walk down this path with us without making a commitment.
I'm really concerned, because I walked across the Little Balbo Island Bridge at low tide...
There's a lot of eelgrass there.
And it looks like there's acres of it in the bottom. We may never get to dredge it again.
Yes, big concern. But that's, arguably, that's eelgrass in a good spot, rather than under somebody else's dock, or it should be dock, arguably. The next one is another...
Isn't that in the Army Corps District, you mean, or...
Army Corps manages almost all aspects of eelgrass.
But what they manage, we're really talking a channel area.
Yes.
And so that's particularly more their concern than ours, right? Or is it...
They make it our concern, or we make it their concern, however you phrase that, because they have to issue permits associated with any take of eelgrass, regardless of where it is, because...
So the fact that we were doing this at a time when we're silted up to the max is going to hurt us to the most, right?
Not necessarily. This will be a study over a period of years, where we will have dredging occurring as the study is ongoing. The next item is another, again, broader analysis of not just the Newport Coast area, but upwards towards Buck Gully and into the Upper Bay. It's kind of a complex way of, of saying that this will develop the plan, which will allow us to find projects which are in that grant application that popped up about four spaces above it that says ASBS Implementation Grant. So we've received the planning grant, we're applying for the implementation grant. We had an eelgrass study grant that was rejected, that now can be folded into the hamp. I listed a couple of other things that do, pardon me? You know, I'm not sure who actually we applied to that from, which is why this cuts you on details, but I'll find out. The next ones are more familiar projects to you. The Beachgoer Amenity Project at CDM actually has a water quality interpretive element in it, and you'll see as that's being built out, some water quality educational things there at CDM State Beach. Hopefully, that project is almost done. The Back Bay Science Center, of course, Councilman. We did match, it had a requirement that we match it with about twenty percent, and of course, as you know, Councilman, we more than matched that in terms of the overall expenditures on the project.
But this is really the, the lesson plans for the interpretive thing that's going to go down to Little Corona, is it?
It's mostly, it's almost all Big Corona, and they're not actually plans, they're built-ins. There's, there's interpretive elements built into the side wall, the sitting wall.
Which one are you on right now?
I'm on five from the bottom, CDM State Beach, Beachgoer Amenity.
Built into the side walls?
The sitting walls, yeah, there's interpretive elements that you'll see come out, they're actually molded in to the design. Roberta Jorgensen has that designed into the project to meet that grant requirement.
You mean, they're there now, and we just can't see them, right?
They're there now, or go... They're there now or going in as part of the last, part of the seating wall. The Back Bay Science Center is next. You folks are quite familiar with that. You see where we had to match the $400,000 from the State Coastal Conservancy, and we did that through your, your contribution of general fund money. The others did not have a match. The Newport Bay Ecosystem-
Where's all our, our other remaining?
I could list it on the next version of this, if that's more helpful. This was just the grant side of things.
One- It's not supposed to reflect the total?
Correct. It's not, just the grant total.
One comment on the Myocean portion. I did go to the Myocean event at the St. Regis and accepted a $200,000 check on behalf of the city.
It's a federal check.
There's over 500, a lot of business people in Orange County, Orange County Business Journal editors, so they really embrace the, the water quality. And I was looking, Dave, at your total, it's very impressive, almost $37 million you've been able to garner in grant monies. I mean, that's like one year's CIP.
Well, in full disclosure, it certainly hasn't been just me, nor it hasn't been just the city. There's been a lot of hard work done by a number of agencies and a lot of staffers here at the city.
Who, who has all been involved in that effort?
Certainly on the next one, the Newport Bay Ecosystem Restoration Project, that's the lion's share of the contributions. That's what, 23.5 million? And this is a combination of work between the city, the county, and the other partners in the watershed, including the cities of Irvine, Lake Forest, Tustin. The Irvine Company is, is on the hook, so they, they're aggressively working with our members of Congress. The key members of Congress in this have been Representative Campbell, Senator Feinstein, and Representative Royce have all been real good at pushing this project for us.
And, and you're finding good collaboration with our neighbors?
Most definitely.
That's great.
Because they all know that if this project doesn't get done, that's going to come from their pockets.
Our overall project is how much on that?
It's a $38.5 million project.
So, now that means the rest of us, or all participants are stuck for the difference between that-
23 and 38.
And 23 and 20.
Arguably, Councilman, they can still, they can, we can still get another year's worth, maybe two years' worth of appropriations from the federal government. There's also the opportunity to reprogram existing federal funds that may have gone to other core projects, but those projects may not be ready yet, so we're looking at both those avenues. And then, continuing down the list, there is a, a grant that we've submitted to help us analyze tiered rates and potentially come back to you with that. This is also an obligation of the MPDS permit. It directs us to look at tiered rate system for our water systems, and it will take into account limited use like those on the peninsula. And then lastly, that's a regional board-directed and implemented study that helps us implement the fecal coliform TMDL, extensive water quality analysis going on separate from what the county does in County Sand. And if it's any help to you, I put these up on a map to kind of show you where these are. Maybe Councilmember Curry, if you could kill the lights just for a second. So you can see there's a citywide component there up in the right-hand corner, and then I kind of put the bars over where each of these projects, what this covers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zasinski?
I would think it'd be helpful in the next iteration of this to have the, the duration of our commitment, just to get a feel for that, as well as the total commitment, not just the matching grant.
Okay.
Because there, I mean, it is commendable that we do get so much bang for our buck out of all these different agencies that are giving us grant money to do these studies or remediation or whatever the money's for, but we, but we do have a little bit more of a commitment on the part of the city, either because of cost overruns or, or whatever.
That's true.
Certainly, like the Back Bay Center, we ponied up quite a significant amount of extra money. I think still at the end of the day, we'll find that the multiplier is, is still fairly great, even with our all-in cost.
Just to amplify on that, David, if I understand this, this page correctly, we've used about a million and a half of the city funds to leverage about $35 million, just thinking about the grant component. Is that accurate in terms of what we're looking at here?
That's accurate, yes.
I think that's a very outstanding effort, and it really shows the commitment. What, what is the time period covered by these projects roughly?
Roughly, it's the last three to four years.
So about a $36 million commitment to water quality, leveraging $35 million of external grants, I think that's an outstanding program for the city, one we should all be very proud of.
A capital project, though, Dave, would be what? I mean, this, it's a $36 million grant, but the total capital commitment is 50 mil?
Well, no, you would see in your CIP, if that's what you're referring to, you'd see in the contributions account the money coming in from other agencies and entities through grants, and you'd also see the match or match requirement there. Some of these will not appear on the CIP because they're not our projects, we're not the lead on them. For instance, the Newport Bay dredging project, we are not the lead on that project, the county is. So that goes into their CIP and not ours. We just, we're merely advocates for the project in terms of its funding.
But there, but the actual cost of the projects that are associated with this is how much? Is it 36 million?
Well, if you added the costs that the city has chipped in for the Back Bay Science Center and the CDM State Beach Project, you'd want to add probably 7 million more than that, so you're up to, what, about 43?
And that would be the total project cost of all those projects?
Yes, with the lion's share being the, the Upper Newport Bay Ecosystem Restoration Project, assuming it gets the rest of the funding, you'd want to add that increase in funding in, too, because I didn't include that.
The, this coliform counts and the bacterial counts, that really is, we're getting no sewage pollution that we know of, right? Or are we getting human sewage pollution that we know of?
We don't know of any human source of, of pollution in the Upper or Lower Bay. There is some, there's some evidence that homeless folks who may live in the Santa Ana Delhi Channel could contribute some, but we've, we have, we have never found viruses, which are the more, the stronger indicator of human sewage, in the bay. We have found it in the channel, leading us to believe that sometimes the viruses can get to the Upper Bay, but we haven't studied that in probably three years.
So, so the, but the fecal matter-
Fecal coliform.
Okay, the fecal coliform of the animals that are using the area is-
Comes from animals or bird life, and it also is in common fertilizer.
Okay, so those, yes, I guess that's true, because that, some of that's just actually reused, recycled.
Right.
So that, but how in the heck are we supposed to, I mean, if it's not human-related that we can't find any of that, how are we, and we're going to be governed by that as a factor?
How, that's what the study's supposed to determine, and Dave can't answer that question-
I wish I knew.
... because the question hasn't, the research hasn't been completed.
Research hasn't been done. We have until 2014 to meet the TMDL, sorry, the fecal coliform limits in the bay, and it's quite a pristine bay that is, that is envisioned by the TMDL. We actually meet those limits almost, in almost all parts of the bay. As you folks know, we've talked about the Newport Island Chales have a little bit of a problem, sometimes the Bay Shore Beach does. All of the tributaries, with just a few exceptions, have exceedances of fecal coliform TM, but the bay itself is meeting most of those standards now, except for those areas.
But do you, just one other question.
Just one.
Do you think part of that is due to the fact that we have now a much more shallow bay, so we have a lot more things like eelgrass and sunlight absorption relative to the land-water area, and, and we might, if we then dredge deeper, cause ourselves one hell of a big problem in this area? We'd have more water to put it in, but we'd also have not as much things to clean it up.
Well, sunlight certainly helps, but I, I think you could argue it with the same enthusiasm that increasing the channel, the channels and deepening that also will assist in the flow, the ocean flow.
And just siphon flow.
You probably, with the deeper water, may have less algae and all that kind of stuff.
You might, yeah.
Okay, might, was this a typo here? It says exploratory trip to check out water quality in Cortland Lane, is that?
I did not charge that to the city.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on these items?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Dennis Baker, Conrad Omar, and I'll make it really quick. I just want to thank Dave and the city manager's office for the effort. Councilmember Curry did a little bit of it, and I'll put it real specific, I was doing it down as 20 to 1, and that's awfully good leverage for my tax dollars, and I thank you very much for that. Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think it also kind of goes to answer, I mean, a portion of Councilman Selich's question is to creep. You look at all of these grants, and you look at applications, and then you look at working with the consultants, and after that, then trying to implement some of the recommendations that come out of that, and here is a huge area that we have been very successful, and we think that's a good thing, but certainly, there is a lot of staff work involved. Dave deserves a major portion of the credit, but there are a lot of other staff people helping to make these grants happen and, and studies happen.
Thank you. Anything else before we adjourn to close the, closed session?
Comments?
Comments on non-adjourned items? Thank you very much. Seeing no one, let's adjourn to closed session.